Council meeting, they'll be talking to us tonight. All right. Welcome to the Acton City Council Meeting for January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular council meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ask all rise.
Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unied, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now, moving on to the roll call, we have Trevor Dersky.
President.
And David Fisher.
President.
EJ Bell.
President.
Samantha Peterson.
President.
Jim Kane is online.
President.
Thank you, everyone. First order of business is to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do the roll call vote. Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
And Jim Kane.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number, item number three is the consent agenda for this evening. That's the approve the city council minutes of December seventeenth, special and regular meetings, and the December twentieth, twenty-four special meeting. That completes our consent agenda for this evening. List of bills will be available at the next meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
And a second, anyone?
All second.
Motion is a second. Further discussion? Okay, moving on to the roll call vote. Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
And Jim Kane.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item number four is a resolution approving the bond purchase agreement for the sale of general obligation corporate purpose bond, series two thousand and twenty-five. And before we have council discussion, Maggie Berger will have a presentation. Thank you, Maggie.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Maggie Berger with Sphere Financial. We have gotten to the point where we're pricing the bonds today. We worked on this yesterday and today. This, the majority of this bond issue, three million dollars, is for your fire station project. This in connection with the FEMA dollars and the insurance money make up that. The other portion of this, there's four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in this bond issue that will get reimbursed to your streets or your road use, local option sales tax, as well as your walk. For some projects that you did a couple of years ago, you did a reimbursement resolution and just said, the next time we issue bonds, we'll put that in there so that we can reimburse ourselves and make some of those accounts whole. So, UMB Bank is who we negotiated this bond sale with. You'll recall, we had a conversation that we needed to have audited financials if we were going to sell them competitively and have a rating, and we just didn't have the five years. In a couple, three years, you'll be at that five-year mark of having regular audit financial statements. So, we did a negotiated sale today with UMB Bank of Des Moines, Iowa, and we're recommending that we would award this evening at a true interest cost of four point six zero eight nine. I remind you, these bonds are tax exempt, and that just means that the people, the investors who buy these bonds, are not going to pay federal income tax on these bonds, and that's why they can lend you, you know, at a rate of four percent versus a rate of six or seven percent that you're seeing on mortgages, car loans, things like that. I did get some details from UMB Bank because they did put this out to local banks in the area. I just wanted to point out, they said that Atkins Savings Bank, who they went to very first with this deal, bought all of the maturities for two thousand and thirty, two thousand and thirty-two, two thousand and thirty-four, thirty-six, and thirty-eight, and that made up thirty-six percent of the whole bond issue today. So, we have great participation from your local bank, which is what we like to hear. Overall, there were six different customers that were a part of today in getting the pricing for that. The majority of those all went to Iowa customers, but we did have banks in not only Missouri, but also Kansas that participated and wanted this deal today. The interest rates start at a four percent. They go down, the highest interest rate is in the end at two thousand and thirty-nine, which is four point seven five. On page two of that first sheet that we have, that recommendation or that award letter, we've got our final numbers, and with that, we have a call feature in here of six-one two thousand and thirty-one. That just means if you have money ahead at that point in time and you want it to, you would be able to call the bonds in early, part of the bonds in early. If you don't have money ahead, you just continue to pay, and that call is only at your option. It's nobody else's option. They can't call the bonds in on you, and if interest rates are lower, let's say they're in the two, two-and-a-half percent range, we'll look at what the refunding options are and if it would save the city money to refund them. We have internally, in our own office, we have to make sure that it's going to save you at least two percent on net interest cost before we're going to recommend any kind of a refund into the city because there are costs involved in doing the refunding. Because we had a negotiated sale today and we didn't have a competitive sale, the second handout is a bond sale comparable. We did some comparables just in the market. It's a new year, so we don't have a lot of comparables out there, but City of Creston recently sold some bonds. Those interest rates started at a five percent, went down to a four percent. They did have a rating, and so that made that deal just a little bit, it changes the deal a little bit, but it's a good comparable because it does mature in two thousand and thirty-five, so close to your two thousand and thirty-nine maturity. We also have the North Pole Community School District that priced recently, again, a mixture of five percent coupons and four percent coupons. Again, we started yours, yours start at four percent and go up to about a four point seven five, so we're really in that range. And then, just recently, last week, we priced for the City of Waterloo. There were two issuances there, the tax-exempt issue is the comparable that I gave. Those were a four percent all of the way down, but again, they had a rating of a double A two, which probably brought those interest rates a little bit lower than what we're seeing today for you folks. I would be happy to answer any questions that you would have. We would suggest and recommend that you approve the agreement this night, tonight, so that the mayor can sign the bond purchase agreement and we can get everything locked in. As of today, everything will be locked in. In a couple of weeks, on your council agenda, you will have another action item. It basically is one resolution that wraps all of this in a nice little bow and has the mayor and Amy sign a whole bunch of documents, but everything gets locked in with your action. And then you will, you are set to receive the money. These dollars are going to come to you, and now I'm flipping through the sheet to tell you when, they're going to come to you on February twelfth. So, you're going to have these dollars in your bank account on February twelfth. We've had a discussion about investment of those because you can invest these dollars, and so the city is working on that. You can invest these dollars until you need to spend them specifically on the fire station project. Any questions for me?
You said we were borrowing an additional four hundred thousand dollars.
Yep, it's in, it's part of this three million dollar amount that we're borrowing. Yep, so it's in there.
So, what is that slated for?
That was for monies that you already spent on water and street projects. You spent those dollars probably the end of twenty-one, maybe the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two. You have negative fund balances in the water, and part of it was you took money out of the water fund to do those projects and never reimbursed yourself. The intent was, at the time you signed a resolution, saying, we will reimburse ourselves as soon as we do another bond issue, and we just haven't done a bond issue since then.
What's the benefit of having the funds there?
Reimbursement of funds, you can't carry negative fund balances, the code section say, and if we don't reimburse the water fund, then you're going to need to raise the water rates pretty significantly to make that approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars up in a one-to-two-year timeframe. So, yeah, I mean, you spent the money, you said you were going to reimburse yourselves, you have negative fund balances that are reflected, meaning there's just no money there if you had an emergency situation.
So, we've got three million dollars in our bank accounts now, why not ship that, put those funds to that?
Because you, you have certain rules and regulations under the Iowa Code of different monies that can be transferred to different fund balances. Certain funds that are brought in by property taxes cannot be transferred into the Water Utility Fund. The Water Utility Fund is an enterprise or proprietary fund that must stand alone on the revenues of the system. Again, you spent those dollars on water projects, and now we're reimbursing with the repayment of this debt, and then you'll use some of those water dollars to repay that debt over the next ten years. There are code sections that require and disallow you to transfer certain dollars into different funds because they're not allowable to be transferred out of a fund that collects based on property taxes and into a fund that collects based on user fees on a monthly basis.
Any other questions for Maggie? All right. With that, we have a motion to approve the resolution and, this being the second, the second resolution of the three, so do we have a motion to do that? Approving the bond sale?
Motion to approve the resolution.
So, I have a motion by Kane.
A second.
Second by Dersky. Any further discussion, counsel?
You said two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that was for the water. What was the other hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So, it was streets. So, altogether, it's four hundred and twenty-five thousand. It was for street projects, so there was a combination of water projects and street projects done at the same time. And I think those funds are going back either into local option sales tax or road, they might be going back into your street by itself, the road use tax, which might be a negative as well.
Yeah, we actually, you actually spent a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, almost a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars more in road use tax in FY twenty-three than you brought in, so I'm sure that's not a part of it.
That's what it is.
And we had the same issue happening.
Okay, with that, we'll have the roll call vote. Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
And David Fisher.
I just will say that if we're having to borrow money because we're paying that since we used other funds to pay for that, and we're now borrowing that, did we properly budget for that and did we properly spend our money for that is what I have a concern in my mind? And did we continually borrow money because we improperly budgeted or improperly spent our funds? And...
These funds were budgeted to be spent that year, and I can tell you, this was the year that we thought the project for the fire station was moving forward, and now we're two years beyond that date. So, they were budgeted, but you spent money that you didn't technically have in those fund balances to spend money on.
Understood, Maggie. This is where I'm going with this. We talked about multiple times during our budgeting last year about we've had a negative budget, but we've never spent it. We ran a negative budget, but is this tied into that same negative budget that we're setting here for years and now we're paying it back because we're borrowing the money?
No, I don't think so because of the proprietary nature of the funds we're talking about.
I think what you're doing is, instead of using a lump sum of cash to pay for a project upfront, you're taking that and you're, you're amortizing that over, you're spending now bond proceeds on that. Just, I mean, we just would assume like this was a project you were going to do this summer, let's say, and we're borrowing for it ahead of that, right? That, that's typically how cities do that, and then they amortize, and over the next ten to twelve years, they're using water revenues every year, they're using local option sales tax or road use tax every single year to pay that debt off so that they just don't take that one lump sum out at one time and create a negative balance in, in that fund.
So, so at this time, if we have a vote on the resolution, we can discuss maybe during the budget time some of your questions and...
You didn't finish your, what, if you were...
The vote on the resolution.
Exactly, that's why I was asking the question.
No, you're fine.
Well, okay. I'm just calling for you to vote.
Before I say yea or nay, I can ask the questions, right?
Well, that's true, and I believe they've completed their answers from what I can tell, but for additional information, we will have some budget time coming up, so budget discussion.
I'm referring to this resolution that I'm referring to. I'm not talking about anything else. I, I, again, I, I am trying to understand for myself why I'm borrowing more money and then to where we're at today versus, you know, I'm just trying to get it all in my mind.
It was budgeted two years ago to be spent. You spent the money on the project, and we assumed that the project would go out to bid, the fire station project, meaning the funds would be borrowed within six, seven months of you spending the money on those water and sewer project, or on the water and streets project, and then FEMA, and everything just got pushed down the road, and, and we resized the project a little bit, and now it's two years later when we're doing the borrowing instead of within five or six months of those projects being completed. But I will say, the city did take the necessary actions under the code section, saying that we're going to do this reimbursement resolution, we're going to spend these dollars on these projects, and as soon as we get the bond proceeds back, we're going to reimburse ourselves. It's just that now is the first time we're getting the bond proceeds back.
And it is less expensive to do it now as a combined borrow than it is to do individual borrows all the way along. I don't know.
Correct, yeah, that's a good point. Every time you do a borrowing, my firm's going to get paid, bond council's going to get paid, all these different parties are going to take their cost of issuance fee that cost us money to put the deals together, to go to meetings, to have conversations, do all the paperwork. So, again, we try to lump as many deals, as many projects into one borrowing. I look at, you know, the City of Atkins, and you're probably not a city that needs to borrow every two or even three or four years. You're probably a city that going forward, when big projects come up, will try to lump as much into it as we can from a budget standpoint, and that, that's also you guys and your capital planning in the future as to putting, you know, deals, putting capital plans in place that maybe every three or four years, if we need to borrow because something is larger than the cash availability that you have, you would do that borrowing, and again, we'd include anything that we put in there to save you cost of issuance dollars.
Aye.
Okay, we hear an aye. Fisher, motion carries.
All right, I'm going to take a document from your mayor that has to be signed by Amy, and then that's what I have to scan in tonight when I get home. Thank you for being here. Thanks, yeah, no, no problems.
Here's one of them.
Thank you. You can keep the rest one. I will, I will have Amy sign this one. You can have her sign that after the evening. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Sure.
Thank you for all your help through this process. Like I said, we've been talking about this for a couple of years, so good luck on your fire station. Hopefully, can I be invited to the ribbon cutting or brand cutting?
And Maggie, what time were you going to put on the document?
Six fifty-three. I marked it down on my, yeah, six fifty-three. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Maggie. Okay. Now, moving on to item number five, resolution approving the final payment for request number one for Midwest Injection. This is the sledge, sledge removal project in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. This is the one and only final payment. Project is completed. So, do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call votes. Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number six. For discussion on the fiscal year twenty-six proposed city budget, we have Teresa Rolcher.
Rolchae.
Rolchaefer. With us tonight, municipal consultant, and, thank you. Teresa's role is assisting the city with preparing a financial budget, annual budget.
Jim, we did email this to you prior to the meeting. Jim Kane.
And I do have a mic.
Sorry, I've got...
Yeah, I'll, I'll have a microphone, so we'll bring the microphone over to you, Teresa.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor mentioned, I've got some information here for you tonight regarding the budget. According, you know, according to our calendar, we have some meetings coming up and some actions we're going to be taking or discussing. I guess I expect any decisions, any action, any, anything tonight, okay? And some of these numbers are draft and preliminary, and I've tried to put asterisks by them and all that kind of stuff so that you don't hold it. I'm pretty straight shooter, so don't be holding those numbers against me in a current coming meeting because I told you it was going to be a draft number, and it's not. But one of the things I, I thought we would hopefully be able to start by talking about, first of all, all of your departments, thank you to the city departments. Amy and I and the mayor have met with each of the departments at this point once, and so when, when we give you, my, my goal is to be able to give you the summary and the actual budget documents for all departments by next week when you start having additional meetings because other department directors then will be coming in and talking about their budgets. For tonight's meeting, I thought what we could just talk about briefly is just a, just a quick review of what's happening, and so the document I gave you a minute ago lists for you what our property, or what our revenues are that the city normally gets, our property taxes, local option sales tax, we might get some fire district fees, we have recycling landfill fees we collect, we get road use tax, we get water, and we get sewer. And then the second slide, or third slide, I tried to just do a quick comparison for you to look at, and I, there's two different numbers, and I feel like I shouldn't have handed back anything because all of you are looking at your papers and no one's looking at me, and I really dressed up for you. So, come on. There's, there's two different numbers in the way we talk about the budget. We talk about your property tax levy, and then we talk about property tax dollars. And as you know, the state legislature for the last several years have been taking actions and doing things to either, A, limit your ability to collect, well, well, actually, limit your ability to collect any property tax revenue, and limit your ability to do anything with the levies. They consolidated a bunch of levies for you, and then they limit your growth and, and have what we kept calling ratcheting back. So, I'm going to kind of talk through those a little bit because they're taking a lot of, a lot of decisions out of your hands. There's just no other way to say it, right? So, this first slide that talks about the property tax levy, remember, you know, when the public gets their property tax bill, they of course always think it's all the city's money. We know it's not. There's a consolidated rate levy for your citizens that live here in Atkins, but the portion of that levy rate that is for the city itself currently in this year's budget is twelve dollars and twenty-one cents per thousand dollars worth of valuation. And so, I've actually broken out for you exactly what that twelve twenty-one makes up in the first column, so our FY twenty-five current budget. And when we talk about the consolidated general fund levy rate, that's the one I talk about where the state has taken this action. I've actually put the certification form in there, which we'll get to in a minute, to show you how that would really work. But based on the fact that we, we basically, well, we know what our maximum general fund levy can be, you could always lower it, so I'm not saying that you can't, so don't take those kind of words and mix them up, but your current general fund consolidated levy is at eight point two three five, and you can stay at that same rate because you did not grow over two point nine nine percent in your taxable valuation. If you grew two point seven, which we'll get to in a minute, but you grew two point seven three percent in your taxable property valuation, okay? So, we just kept that maximum dollar, or that maximum levy rate, all right? And then the other levies that you have the ability to control are your liability property, which is your court liability insurance. These are only the, only for the general fund expenditures that you have, okay? So, it's not pure water insurance, wastewater insurance, any of those is only on the side of the, of the coin. That's the only thing we can levy for. Same with FICA IFRS, same with employee benefits. Now, as I just learned, after forty-three years of local government, I've never charged anybody, but apparently we can levy the road use tax benefits and the general fund levy, not, but we can't do the water and the sewer. So, in these numbers where I have, where I'm showing you FICA IFRS, and FICA IFRS was at point six five four cents, I'm projecting for next year, a point seven nine one as your levy rate and to hopefully get the dollars we need in. Same with employee, other employee benefits, those didn't really go up very much at all based on what our current budget is and, and the fact that you haven't filled a position in public works and some other things. So, the, the numbers stayed about the same. The other one was pretty much insurance. And then debt service, that's where you see all my asterisks, and I'm, I'm guessing, not guessing, but using numbers that Maggie and I just went over, but she's going to send me another form. I'll show you how we went from two fifty-two or almost two fifty-three down to a dollar eighty-four, dollar eighty-five. That's incredible news on your part. That's great why you do a sale, that's great why we're reimbursing ourselves, quite frankly, for monies we've spent in the future. But that basic, that then would say the budget would go from twelve dollars, the levy rate would go from twelve twenty-one to twelve oh two. Now, the asterisk, based on the debt service levy, big asterisk on whether you want to make some other changes in distribution of salaries or something like, something like that, or distribution expenses. As an example, this for you as a mayor and city council, you deal with water, wastewater, general activity, you're paid all out of the general fund. None of the water sewer utility revenues are used to pay you as council, mayor and council. None of those water or sewer rates are used to pay the city clerk or the city administrator or the utility billing clerk. Of all things, the utility billing clerk really should be paid out of water and sewer. If that's what that person is doing the majority of the time, you're currently not set up to do that. So, that's why I'm saying we have things to talk about going forward, but we'll change this a little bit more. The next slide then I gave you, it's the same terms, I'm just putting in the dollars for you because people will say, well, my valuation went up, and, and yet you lowered the tax rate, but I still had to pay more in taxes. That would, that would be the case if we use your exact same tax rate of twelve twenty-one in this next coming year, the property owner's going to pay more because our rollback went the other way. So, when we get down to a more finite, finite number, I'll be able to show a slide to you to show you like what I'm... to show you like what a hundred thousand dollar house is going to pay versus last year versus this year. But again, does your house stay the same? You know, there's all those variables that are out there. But based on lowering the levy rate from twelve twenty-one down to twelve oh two, so almost an eighteen, nineteen cent decrease in levy rate, the actual dollars that the city of Atkins would receive would only be two hundred and twenty-four dollars left because of rollback and because you did grow that little bit. So these are all numbers I just want you to keep in the back of your mind. You, you need to know all these revenues as we start talking about all these expenditures. Local option, sales tax, you currently, I'm just putting in here what you currently do, your local option, sales tax revenue, you get, distribute seventy percent to community betterment, ten percent to fires department, ten percent to the parks department, and ten percent to the property tax relief. And you can see I've given you two years of actual, our current year budget, and then what we're anticipating for next year's budget. So that's a revenue. The next slide for revenues, we have TIP property tax revenue that we collect that comes back to the city for some of our debt. You'll see we use obviously TIP for, and we also have a developer that we're paying rebate payments for. But here's a history, two years' actual history, and then two years' budget. And those numbers, you might say, geez, how could we go from three fifty-two to seven forty-seven? That's our request. I have no idea what those true valuations came in as for that developed property. So we may request that amount of money from the county. We may not get it because the valuation didn't grow up that much. I don't know all that yet, okay? But that's, that's why that history is a little bit different. You look at the fire district fees, we talked about this this morning with the fire chief, and that outlier, excuse me, in FY twenty-four, the outlier, they, the county gave or paid a hundred thousand dollars towards a truck or something, I believe, or gave you additional money versus just fire district fees.
Correct.
So that's why there's a little outlier. And then we talked about recycle, or I, Amy had to kind of explain it to me, but your recycling garbage fees and your landfill fees, they come from two different vendors, and, and yet they're on your utility bill as one rate or two rate, one rate. And so that's why I added them together. It appears that kind of the way we collected our, our landfill fees aren't going up, but the garbage and recycling fees are going up slightly, and so that's why that number changes on the recycling and garbage line, but not necessarily on the landfill line. But I then did the summary of the totals, so you went from two eighteen to three oh nine to three thirty-three to three forty-two. This should be a pass-through, right? Because you guys are collecting that. So even, it's not an enterprise fund because it's not a business you're running. And so that's why it's, I consider it more of a kind of fee. Then the next one, of course, is what would be, would, can be considered restricted fees a little bit, the special revenue monies we get in that aren't TIP and are proprietary funds, and I've given you two years of history and two years of budget. And so when you're absorbing all of the spreadsheet I'm going to be sending you, I'm probably going to try to just keep adding to this PowerPoint maybe. I'm not quite sure how I'm going to change that yet. This was just a lot of work, discussion, thinking and stuff today, but as things move around a little bit, these numbers will change. If you, if you wanted to consider that we should be charging some of the enterprise funds for some of the wages and benefits for certain positions within the city, that would change some things up, certain things like that, that you guys will be talking about that really don't necessarily affect department heads or, even I, it's just how I put the numbers in the page. You guys will be doing that, but. So we get done with the revenues, I'm going to switch you over to expenditures, and I just reminded you in that next slide what, what I call program areas, which is how I have to budget things and which how you have to spend them. So in public safety, the contractor, your police services, your fire department EMS, now that EMS has, you have this separate EMS thing, right now is the only one little line, emergency management line that you have in your budget is mixed into the fire department's budget. I'm going to pull that out and, and have to be its own department, emergency management department. Now, they're still working on the county level, as I understand that they're still working on exactly how all that's going to work. So I just thought it'd be better that we separate that out. But these are the areas, program areas that we'll be finishing up budgets and we'll be putting them, putting them together and doing some spreadsheets. I'm not sure at what point then we'll be training Amy and, and any other staff on necessarily how to put them into your software. There's some things I want to discuss with your other contract, she happened to contract to counter, I thought she would call, and I wasn't, she wasn't able to call me back today. But the next then slide is actual, the actual adoption and certification page of the budget that we would send into the state of Iowa. So this is where I got those levy doll, or levy rates and dollar amounts for. This would be the one based on just the little stuff I gave you today, and that's where you see we'd be at twelve oh two at the bottom. What I wanted to draw your attention to is at the top of that form, that's how the state has done this calculation for the ratcheting back for other cities. So as an example, it, it tells us right up front what your valuation is right at the top on lines two A, two A, two B, three A, three B, four A. I'm, I always just kind of focus when I discuss with councils, I'm just going to focus on your, your numbers in A. The state has the formula that drives the numbers in B, and, and the decrease on the B side just is what comes back to us as utility excite or utility taxes. So when we pay our property taxes, you pay a bill, the county and the state have separated in property taxes and utility tax, and that's how it comes back to the city. But for the overall picture, it's just easier for me to tell you guys, we're going to be looking at column A, and that's the number I'm going to be talking about most of the time. But, so we have our valuations in line two, three, and four, and then that's what drives that middle section or that upper top section that talks about your consolidated general fund levy calculation. And so the current year, your consolidated levy, as I said, was eight point two three five, and your dollars that we collected this year are six hundred and fifty-four dollars, six hundred and fifty-four, one eighteen. And you grew over to the far right side, you'll see where the taxable growth valuation was two point seven three percent. That's under the new, you know, at the end of the year last year, House filed two eighty something, I can't remember, two eight something. They even changed it, so we used to have three tiers, we now four, and that first tier is two ninety-nine and below, and those people are going to get zero. And so you were at two seventy-three. So where it talks about your limitation percentage, if they were going to be rolling back your amount of money you could collect, instead of it saying zero right there on this form, it would say one percent, two percent, two percent, four percent, whatever, or three percent would maximum, would stay right there what they're rolling you back. Since they're rolling you back at zero, your max levy rate stays the same. We have to actually collect that max dollars of six hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, which is what I put down then on line five under A, five A. Are y'all following me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If I, if I don't put that maximum dollar number there, I don't get to collect in those special revenue amounts down below, which were FICA hypers and other employee benefits. So if you said, oh, no, I don't really want to be at the max, then that changes everything. So if we, if we want to come back and you guys want to start changing the levy rate because of something else, the area you're going to be working on is in the employee benefit dollar number or the liability tort number. Okay? So I just wanted you to actually see this form, know that that's what we work with, and basically this kind of just comes out of your hands. I mean, other than the amount necessary that we need to charge for those other things, that's what we're going to do. I did put down, I hope I did, I didn't do it in here yet. I still need to add it in there. It doesn't affect your overall, but you would, I would always, you would maximize your ag levy. You don't have very much, but we'd be putting something in there, that maximum ag levy amount is three point zero zero three seven five, which is what I assumed you've done every year, but I'll need to add that, but that doesn't affect the twelve dollar total. Okay? So the next page then I put in here was another form out of the state budget. So this is a form I actually, we actually have to complete to put in here, and this is what drives that debt service levy rate. So at the bottom of the page you just turned away from, you'll see that there, at the bottom of that page, your debt service levy amount of a hundred, one hundred and ninety dollars, one hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars comes from the bottom number on this latest form on the right-hand side at the bottom. So on this page, we've listed all of the, the six debt assurances you have per community. We list the principal that's going to be paid in the next year. We list the interest that's going to be paid. We list either the registrar fee with U of V Bank, or we're listing the fee, service fee we have to pay because it's an SRF loan. And then in the second column, the second to the last column where it says paid from other funds other than your debt service levy, you know, your first two debts on this form, you pay for from TIP. The next two debts you have are wastewater treatment debt, and so you will be paying that out of your wastewater treatment, so you don't levy taxes for that either, or you shouldn't have to. We did have to, to help out a little bit last year. And then the next two, the eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar debt from twenty twenty-two, I believe was the fire trunk, five hundred and fifty thousand, seven something for fire truck and some other things. And then the last one is the one you just talked about tonight. So those are the six debts you have out there. The one debt that you could have, as Maggie mentioned, she called about a call date, the one that you have coming up that I saw, which she will look at for you as well as me looking at for you, the call date of next year, our interest rate's two percent, so we're not going to be calling that. We're just going to keep writing that maybe out. So anyway, that's what this form is about. And so in the last few pages, this is where I'd like a little bit of feedback from you. I, I look back at what we gave you last year, what we talked about, and I'm going to start with road use tax, and it appears that we gave you kind of a summary of a little bit of history for them, what they were going to be budgeting, where we're at for this year, and then what they're asking for next year. So based on last year's form, I've just added another column, so you're still getting last year's data, but I added the column that was actual for FY twenty-four. So on June thirty of twenty twenty-four, your actuals are now in here. The fund I picked was the road use tax fund, okay? And I, I put in there the revenues we anticipate, and I'll be honest with you, the Iowa League of Cities always gives us the DOT estimated number, because the DOT gives us an estimated number, and I always recommend that you be under that number. Some cities don't want to go as far under as I suggest they do, it's up to you folks. But you'll see that very first line where it talks about road use tax distribution, the estimate for FY twenty-six is a hundred and forty, one hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents per capita. I used the population number that Terry gave me this morning from May of last year or something like that. Anyway, of two thousand one hundred and sixty-six, so we're just kind of guessing, but times the dollar amount, and I lowered that by three dollars. And when I lowered it by three dollars, you'll see the history where we're at. We were at two seventy-four, two eighty-two, two ninety. We estimated for this year, two seventy-one, so we might be a little low in this year's estimate, but for FY twenty-six, I'm estimating two ninety-seven, so that's still about eight thousand dollars more than we actually received in FY twenty-four. You know, it's, I don't know what gas is going to do, what people are going to do, who's going to pay, you know, what, who's got electric cars, you know, we don't get anything for that now. I, you know, I don't, I just don't know. So if you think that's too conservative, you of course can change that however you would like. But then I just go on and I talk about the expenditures within the department. Again, I'm not asking you to make any decisions tonight, but what I anticipate to happen in these other budget work sessions is that you get these sheets from me that have the department on there and their information. The department directors have all given me some written direction about why that is what it is, and I'm going to try to put it out here to the side on some notes. So as an example, the thirty thousand dollars for the culvert slash district repair slash maintenance, we have thirty thousand in this year's budget. It hasn't been spent yet, but it isn't, doesn't claim to be, or still could be in the spring.
It still could be this year.
Yeah, yeah. But he's, he's given me, and of course, Jared's here, here, right?
Yep.
She's, that name, is here to answer any questions or talk about stuff, but I've listed off to the side what he is giving me as detail and where these culverts and district repairs will be taking place. And that, of course, then is amongst discussion with you guys on whether you're all, I don't know, whether you think that's okay or you're just going to say, okay. But for each of his expenditure line items then, we have done that, and street maintenance, a hundred thousand dollars, talking about chip sealing, line striping, crack sealing if we need to, if there's money available. And then the second page of his department, of course, we have road repair projects, and I'm not sure, Jared, what PC oh oh nine meant, is that just your concrete project?
PCC is the Portland Summit Project List.
Okay, so he's got a list from.
It's a continuation of the list that Nick had for us, which is Nick's advice was to just continue down the list, but skip Cardinal because Cardinal is such a big project that it could be a huge capital improvement plan, so.
So that's what he's done here. And, and, you know, I don't know if you want to talk about some of these items in, in particular, and that's how you decided to do it. We've talked, he has in here some equipment that he wants or that he thinks he needs, and there's discussion about those you can have, so I'll, I'm happy to let you kind of look at that, see if you have questions for him. But my, from my point of view, I just want to know if you think this is going to work for you regarding discussion with each department, or if there's something else you want to see from me regarding these items, or regarding each department.
So the road use tax distribution is shown as two ninety-seven, eight twenty-five, right? And then we show the revenue, that's a, that's an ex, that's negative on this sheet, and this is a sheet of expenses, so that's a revenue or that's an estimated revenue? Now, we show two seventy-one, three ninety-two in the revenue section for, that's for twenty-five, so two seventy, okay, so it lines up. Now, what is the sum of our estimated expense?
So unfortunately, what this is telling you then is that if you look at the very bottom of that page.
Five hundred and.
Yeah. The five hundred and fourteen thousand, seventy dollars is that his budget is spending five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars more than he's bringing into road use tax. Seems like a lot of money, but I would have to make sure my formula is right.
That's, that's beyond, that's accounting for the two ninety-seven in revenue.
Yeah, and that might be, did I predict something?
Which, I, I mean, I don't want to, I'm not able to disqualify anything on its face. I, I don't know if it's the case that we've always, it appeared that it's not, that we've always paid for our roads exclusively with road use tax revenues. It looks like we paid for it in other sources, at least in twenty-three, and potentially again in twenty-five. I just want to confirm, I'm seeing kind of an income statement idea here where revenue less expense, what's the net? And it's negative, so I think that's what we've got to, we got to understand how that fits in with everything else when you start to hear more departments.
And I need to, can you do that off the top of your head? Well, a hundred and, a hundred and thirteen is two thirteen, and then a hundred and seventy-five, three. So yeah, I guess I'm going to, I'm hoping my formula is right.
I can, you wait on that while there's.
But that, that is the, the point for the discussion, I guess. And whether you want some of the, whatever Nick is, whatever Nick has turned in other projects or that sheet that you're just talking about.
It's the capital improvement.
Oh, okay.
Submitted.
Is that that sheet you gave me today? Okay.
The large, the large increases are road equipment and then sand shed and other, and so capital improvements in, in equipment versus, I don't see a big increase in projects or maintenance or anything else.
Okay.
or maintenance or anything else.
Okay.
Unless I'm missing something.
Stop time, right, you should.
Sure.
Yeah. So the question, you know, then that's what you were talking about, or Maggie was talking about, is whether you, you know, with your C I P, if you're issuing debt every year or not issuing debt every year. You know, part of the challenge I had in a faster growing town was that you did have to issue that a lot faster than you wanted to because you got, you had to keep up those streets and you had to keep up with stuff like that. In another community I'm working with right now, they're just going to issue, to balance their debt service fund, what they've asked to do is issue debt every other year for two million dollars. And that two million dollar debt, then, they determine which projects will be, I mean, they're taking their C I Ps in and going and deciding which projects are in that two million dollar debt. So it's not, unfortunately, it's not uncommon that, that you, that road use tax is not totally supporting the activities and the equipment needed to be in, in the roads. I don't have, what I don't have on here though, Trevor, is I don't have any beginning balance. So.
Yeah, and I think, I mean.
One of the things I would, I would hope to be able to get done to you, done for you, is kind of a reconciliation of each of your ones that tells you this was your beginning balance, this was their expense dispersment, and know what kind of beginning balance we've had carried forward. So I don't have that on here. This is true year to year. Because I actually like that year that, you know, we split a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars more than we took in the year before. It looks like we saved a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So, you know, that does make a difference that the beginning balance isn't in there.
And Teresa, we have the, for example, tonight, we talked about the, the borrow we have going on as far as repaying ourselves on roads and that.
That would have been in, that would have been in those previous numbers.
Right.
Yeah.
So this chart, chart would not show those, that revenue.
Well, is it, are we going to hear again, I mean, well, we have a chance in a different work session to, to kind of hear the rationale for some of these.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
Yeah, or, or you can ask him tonight if you want. I mean, that's why he's here. So, you know, I don't know if they want to come to every one of those work sessions. So.
If you're ready to talk about it, or if you'd rather do a work session, I can try to answer it, so.
Well, I think the road equipment, and I think we're going to get away from having these savings accounts.
Yeah, I don't know why it says savings because we don't have anything.
Right. So previously, it was a, it was a placeholder for like a, you know, an annual allocation. And then when you got to the amount that you could buy your thing for, then you buy it, right? Just, just kind of, I don't know how that's a lot different than borrowing money, buying it, and then amortizing and depreciating it over two years. But yeah, so those, the one, three, one-third back track trailer, the Kubota vehicle, and then the attachments, just that increase, like what's, what's this made?
So the back trailer is plus between roads, water, sewer. I gave you a list, we actually gave her my copy of the list of past penny bills and C R C trenching bills for curb stops. There's also for Todd, it's part of it, there's the lead counter program that we have to physically go down and make sure that there's copper pipe on both sides of the curb stop and not wet pipe. So this map would allow us to do that instead of contracting it out. There's a lot of culverts in town that need cleaned. We can use that map to clean those culverts instead of hiring C R C trenching to come out and clean them. So a lot of stuff that we can do in-house. There's a back trailer, street signs, for, for some, some of the street signs in the whole part of town, they have big concrete around them, and it would just help us pull those out and put new ones in.
And the utility vehicle pulls the back trailer or?
No, the back trailer is pulled by the truck. But the utility vehicle is something now, now that we have the two forty-two trail in the spring, summer, when it's wet, it's easier to drive that back there or back there to do trail maintenance, trim trees, cut up trees that are falling down or whatever versus driving a big pickup back there and running out the trail. And it just makes it a lot more user, a lot more user-friendly for going around the park, picking up in the trash cans. The summer when we rented it was worth its weight in gold. I mean, it was a great addition that we had.
Okay. For me, I, I mean, I get the justification for some of the things. I'm not going to deny that. But for me personally, I would, you know, especially like the equipment, like the gate or something like that, I wouldn't buy brand new. I'd do whatever I can to find a used one. I mean, you know, I get why you're asking for it. I see other communities using it. I know exactly what you're talking about, going back there. You know, I understand cleaning out the ditches, it's probably one of the biggest complaints we get in the community, as in I'm one of them. So I've said things, there's a lot of ditches that need to be. What's the, what's, you know, obviously, this equipment is that type of money. What, what were we spending to have somebody else come in and do that when it needed to be done, when you guys couldn't do it? Do you have, like, like cleaning out some of the ditches and stuff?
The outsourcing.
What, what cost compared to having the tool ourselves?
What's crazy is what you have. Hundred fifty, two hours. Yeah. So C R C trenching, who's come out and cleaned the culverts, it's a hundred and fifty bucks an hour, two-hour minimum.
Okay.
And there's some women taking him four, five hours to clean them out.
Sure, I get, I get that. And then.
Eight hundred, probably close to it. Eight hundred an hour.
And then, and then the other obvious question I'm going to ask is obviously time-wise, I'm, you know, you guys, he's working primary and water or something like that, is this, you're going to have time to do the equipment? Because I mean, honestly, there's a lot of ditches in this town that need to be probably cleaned up.
Yeah, Mike and I would have time to, well, it's set time to, hey, next week, whether the guys were doing.
Next month.
We did that, and then I did that before Mike started, we rented an excavator. It's, it was time consuming, but I mean, it's something we have to just sit down and do.
Okay.
And if we have the correct tools, it would make it a lot easier.
And then just the obvious, and for me personally, obviously, this is new equipment, correct, for the thirty thousand? Or is this like a used, I don't know what kind of money?
I mean, we would like to go new, but if we can't go new, we go used, I guess.
I just don't know what, what it would cost between used and new and stuff like that.
The prices for the roller landscape break, tiller on the ground or something like that, that's all new prices.
Okay.
So it's all new cordia and caterpillar.
Okay.
Another thing is the lease is up on the excavator and the skid loader throughout this year. So if this ditch cleaning is something that we are going to keep doing in-house, we would probably have to look at extending that lease or buying an outright. And I'm working with the salesman to get those numbers right now, at least working on it.
What was the list that you got from Amy?
The list was just from like ten way excavated, it was just a dollar amount to what projects they've done the last year and a half for us. So I didn't have time to, I didn't have time to print out a couple copies, but I can certainly set them out, but.
That would help with the justification.
Right, that would be kind of what, yeah.
Maybe you can scan it and send it or?
Yeah, also just comment that we are pulling invoices for the last couple of years, just tallying how much we expect on this.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Yeah. Because we want to know if it's justified to get the equipment or just keep outsourcing it. Because you have to double, you have the time for the guys to do it, and then you have to, you know, them to do it, so.
So going back to the back trailer, it is what Todd's letting copper program. I talked to Nick, and everything has to be done, like if there's any lead in town has to be completely removed in the next twelve years. So with that, Todd sat down and he figured out there's two hundred and eighty houses and Nick's estimate of five hundred dollars a house would be a hundred and forty thousand dollars that we would pay to have somebody come in and back a hole on inside of a curb
That's the document, whether it's there or not there. I personally don't think we have any, but we still have to, we have to prove with physical evidence that it's here, there, not there. So that's, that, that number is quoted, up to five hundred dollars a household, is to show the city's service line to the shut-off valve in the yard, and then the homeowner's service line from the shut-off valve to their house. The quickest, easiest way to do that is to, we call it pot, pot a hole on either side of that, taking a picture of that, and then that would be proof to the D N R slash E B A of what that, of what's there or not there. Just going to the basement and taking a look at what comes through the wall is not the whole, whole story. And, and you said twelve years, twelve years, it's either got to be proven, it's got to be a hundred percent taken care of across the country.
So five hundred dollars a household would be if we came to hire somebody to do the work, is what you're saying? And what was the total that you said?
It was a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand for the two hundred and eighty homes. And that's just the ballpark number on the homes. And those homes are homes that were built prior to nineteen eighty-six, that would still have the lead in the copper solder or, because it's not, so.
And then all of those could also be, also, could also be justification for the fourth person, the budgeting for it, hired public works. So this would be the tools that we can take care of a lot of these projects versus hiring them out.
And then, so we, we haven't done much of the road, road repair projects, it looks like in twenty-five, is that right, that line?
The concrete district repair?
Yeah, we had a hundred and fifty-two.
That is all set to rock for bit in February. We have to work on that, it's got the list. The same list that you guys approved.
So you think we'll last budget? You think we'll use, we'll use all of that, that one fifty-two? We'll stick it in?
I would, I would plan on it. I don't know what the numbers will come back as. I mean, so far, everything that's been done for bit has come back cheaper than engineering costs, that's good, so, but I would not, I would just kind of use them a full note.
I mean, what I'm seeing here, and I, I don't know, we're over halfway through the year, and so I think the F Y year-to-date columns is informative. And I think we can feel more confident about the numbers than like this time last year because of working with E S G and, and the work you guys have put into rebuild the ledger. If I, if I do that, if I take everything and I kind of analyze it, what's in there, and I back that out, I mean, we're still, we're, we're coming in well under budget in twenty-five, substantially in a lot of cases. And so like, you know, vehicle supplies, twelve thousand budgeted, five thousand spent, you close that gap, the rest is probably not. Three things, thirty-two thousand budgeted, twelve-seven spent. That one, if you analyze it, you see, I think this is the sort of analysis that we need to do. And to your point, Teresa, where the fund balances come in, we're not going to hit it exactly right every year. Projects are going to get delayed, maybe we try to do more than we can do. And so us taking a longer approach than any given year, I think is warranted. But also, we need to, we need to consider what this looks like when we bring all the other departments in as well. So I, I think this is good information. I appreciate the work you guys put into it. I think maybe one more thing I'm curious about is the, is the capital expense line. So sand shed, repairing the shop, kind of a little bit of a remodel of the building over there. Yeah, we'll hear thoughts on, on those items.
So the sand shed, I don't know when the sand shed built, it was four years ago. It's a wooden structure with tin around it, sand shed that's rusted out, sand fallen off the backside. And it's not prepared for the, back when the town was six, seven hundred people, it was pasty, it was perfect. Now, like the last two ice events we've had, we've had to have four loads of sand, that's all the sand truck did for us, just to keep us stockpiled up to where if we have another event, we have the sand. So we'd like to make one a little bigger. And it's just.
Yeah, how big was the town on that sand shed?
Or how many miles of roads?
Yeah, right, trying to get there roughly. Right. Right now, about thirty miles, plowing, you know, the fall of town.
Also with the sand shed, the size of it, only half of the sand is now exposed to weather. It can be rained on, so you lose a lot of your goodie. Still having a full canopy over it and stuff.
And then like the back wall for the shop, it's separated from the foundation, it needs to be short-tripped back up and put back to the place.
And as you guys move into the, the current interim fire station, I think is the plan, right?
Yep.
What is the current, the old city hall, the current public works headquarters, is that just going to continue as a garage, garage space, shop space?
They'll, they'll, probably, they'll still have our signs up there, we'll do our sign shop up there. Then would be indoor storage for some of the equipment that's sitting outside that used to be inside. So it helps with maintenance on equipment hoses, don't dry out, crack. We have to find us to get like the excavator, the skid loader parked inside, mower back inside, tractor back inside, so.
Will we have that enough space down there?
No. That's why they're sitting outside now.
That's because that's being utilized.
Right. But when we could move, when, when that gets, the fire station gets moved out, gets put back up here, we will have that storage back. We're going to move our main public works down to the new building, and then we'll use the old city shop for storage. So before, where the fire station is now, was all cold storage, was where parks were over, the snowplows, all that stuff, just parked inside a tin building, who's what it was.
You're still getting a square footage, substantial amount of square footage, so that, that equipment can be parked in there no matter what.
Right, well, but right now, it's sitting outside because we don't have that square.
Understood, understood. But what he was saying was, when you get that opened up down there, you'll be able to park it in that down there.
Right, but we're going to move our shop and offices down there to a newer building, and we're going to use the shop, the old city hall of nine Bobby Ts for storage, how to be in a storage building.
Like all the trucks and everything that are in that building, they'll move down there. But everything that's sitting outside, excavators, all the equipment sitting outside, then we'll go.
We'll go inside the building.
Yeah. All right, yeah, so they're all going to be inside.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be back inside where they were.
But I thought the wall was due to the fact that the lumberyard built back there that was caused by the lumberyard.
Engineers have talked and insurance, and I don't know where, Bruce, can you fill in more where that's at? That was out of my hands.
That was, wasn't determined what actually caused it, just that it was noticed. It's one of those things where it just showed up one day. It did happen about the time that the parking lot was added next door, but the, I mean, the insurance analysis was done was not, couldn't say that that was really what happened or not. So.
But it, it just, it needs to be fixed. If we want to keep using that building, something needs to be done with that wall.
Any more questions? So I didn't expect to hear all this tonight, so I, I don't, I don't, I really haven't had any time to take it in. Honestly, I'm going on about four hours of sleep, so it's not too good.
Well, that's why I didn't expect you to maybe have all.
Well, that's why I didn't expect you to maybe have all your questions answered or asked, because we did just give this to you. I wanted to just make sure. I knew Jared was coming, thought that this would be a good department to have here and ready, a good one that people can kind of wrap their arms around a little bit. Appreciate his time and Todd's time tonight. And as long as the format is okay for you guys, I'll just continue and create the rest of them, give them back to department directors so they see it as well as the council sees it, give it a little bit more time to look at them, think about it after, after questions ready. And then, you know, depending on mayor, how you want to do it, who you want to come to a meeting, or if you want all of them to be at the next meeting in case everybody has their questions ready, or, I don't know, that's up to you. You don't have to decide that now either.
I think one thing I'd like to see added, thank you for doing the formatting and all the numbers and cells and everything, is that there would be a column for the benefit to the city as far as how that does either improve or prevent something. And I think that could just be added off to the right as well as any analysis that you might do and provide those references. If you have a number of culverts, a number of hours who it's been doing something based on your invoices, throw some numbers, if it's 30 that you plan to do, 20, whatever it might be, I think that would be good to put, you know, in that area for, you know, how, how is it a benefit? That kind of thing. Kind of what goal does it take us to? Does it take us to improving the runoff in that particular block or that sort of thing? If Nick has to weigh in on that, that's fine too. Just a short, doesn't have to be a big analysis, but it would be something to say the benefit of whatever the task is. So that's all I have.
What is, what's included in operating supplies?
Everything for, we would need for paint, the top of the road part, right?
Yeah.
It would be like.
Budgeted it was 42,000, and year-to-date was just 6,000. I don't know if that was like, had like.
What did we need for shop supplies? Paper towels, paints, just, just made of shops.
Kind of a catchall.
I think there's one big item for it, what it takes to keep the shop going and.
And what, Jared, what, where does fuel come out?
Maybe.
I mean, where do you pay for fuel?
I don't know what line comes out of.
Yeah.
I think there is a line for, I just wonder if it, well, I have to log into it.
I thought maybe that was one of them.
I think there's a line for.
For operating supply.
Maybe that included fuel, but.
If you can get that answer, that'd be great.
Yeah, we can.
I mean, that sort of thing is currently, is that currently outsourced? Yeah, individual journal entries for these items, or?
They, so we, we enter those when we process accounts available. So if we get like the gas invoice from the depot, then we distribute that between the departments.
So that happens internally?
That happens internally, yep. So we would have to pull that up and see where each one is getting coded. What's your question?
I have a question. I'm just saying it's got to go in the EBA.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll continue with this format, add another column to talk a little bit about that benefit add-in and things like he was just telling, telling you about what it's going to cost if he had the camera of each one of those 500 a house, blah, 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 you know, those types of things. And we'll, we'll keep continuing to add to those so you know more details and we're ready for questions. And then hopefully, as, as I get some of these done, I can go back and, and take your main funds that you have or do some sort of reconciliation that, that does give you your, more specifically, not, not just by, your state form obviously gives you your general fund, your special revenue enterprise, blah, 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 but it doesn't break it out purely by water. So we're, I think, I would have to do that as a reconciliation regarding getting in any balances, but that's, that's important. So I will just keep marching forward with those and get things out to you as quick as we can. And.
Do we need to put some special workshops on the calendar tonight?
We have them on our calendar. I don't know what your guys' calendars look like now. Look like we had them set almost every week.
Okay, so that's, that's still, we're going to go with the 21st, 28th of February, April?
Hopefully you'll be done, maybe you'll have to have all of those.
Yeah, the, the idea would be follow that calendar, so to get consensus tonight that we would continue on that calendar. It's kind of what we were looking at to plan for, so. I believe next week we would have another meeting, 6:30 PM. We, we could have a workshop format, again, to continue on with some of this information.
So I know we have to stick to the timeline. I will be traveling the evening of next Tuesday, the 21st, but I understand if we need to, we just need to keep moving along and I can.
Yeah, we need to have drop dead times too. We can't run these at late.
No, and that's fine. I, I, we'll probably be out of town for, for a week, so, but I can watch the video, you know, to get caught up, so we can stick with that. I just want to let you know.
Sure, and it won't be, that, we're not making decisions those nights, we're getting information.
Yeah, right.
Work sessions, so. But I would say too, if you, if you can't attend the full meeting, come for what you can attend to, and then you can always ask questions.
Sure.
At other times, we'll try to put as much information in there as possible.
So what are we going to do for the 21st? Do we set a time for?
We could start at, we plan to start at 6:30. We can.
When we bump the time up to like 6?
6?
Move it up? Yeah, move it up.
Okay, makes sense. Whatever you guys want to do on that one.
How about you? I know you've got it.
Well, I've got to be up 2:00 AM tonight, so.
Well, but, I mean, for next week, with that. Are you on that stage or something?
Sometimes I don't get home till 5:30.
Okay. Well, but with.
Typically, I'm home by 5:30.
Teresa, does that 6 o'clock work for you then next week?
Yeah, I'll be, it'll be 7 o'clock for a map at that some time.
All right, we'll, we'll continue with our calendar plan then, starting at 6, however, instead of 6:30.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. All right. Moving on to item number seven, discussion of possible action concerning the city administrator Per Graham Valdez's email, executive search, he requested that the city council consider increasing the, the salary for the city administrator position to 110,000. And we'd need to have some determination on that, if that's, that would be appropriate, so. Any thoughts on that? Right now it's setting at 100,000, that's the maximum.
He, but he indicated that can be contingent to get to that amount. We can set performance targets, and so we have a lot of things that need to be done. I think there is an interest expressed in writing ordinances and updating code and those sorts of items, so I would, I would, I would, it'd be interesting for us to consider setting some sort of incentive to get to that number, but aligning it with progress on that big list of projects that we got from Sandy.
I think that would be beneficial to the city to have.
You know, and then, and then there's, there's a justification, and I think it was, it was expressed clearly, that would be palatable for the other party as well. I just, we got to obviously make sure that it's very clearly communicated and we're all in the same understanding of what it means to achieve our performance. So that it's fairly administered.
And I believe that can be done in the contract, I've seen that, locations, so.
I agree though, if we can't get there, we're already a no, and I don't think it makes sense to move it further.
With flowers and.
The candidates. They're on the table, so.
I guess we probably can't talk about the candidate at all, at all in this discussion, but I would like to keep an open mind to increase in the budget with the performance parameters and I'd like to keep an open mind with that as we, as we go through the process with this candidate. I think it's worth considering.
I never understood that we had anything set in stone ever. We never set a dollar figure. We said it was going to be contingent on the person and what they had for experience is what we said. But I don't ever recall setting enough of a limit or a lower, lower limit other than what we did ourselves here, which was, I mean, that was the initial discussion, but.
I think we talked about it a little bit as a budget item to make sure we were for budgeting to make their lives easier, but I don't, I don't remember all of the conversation.
I think it was some, some guidance that we gave Graham, you know, kind of a target.
That sounds.
But it wasn't a, this is the maximum we're going to, and this is what we're going to do negative from a minimum or whatever. I don't think that.
Well, what do you, so do we need like.
We could actually make a motion to incorporate the things discussed here as far as.
So would it be better to incorporate? Instead of just saying a dollar amount now, should we, based on the candidate? I don't know. How do we want to do that?
That's just still all negotiations as I look at it. And basically, that's not something, I mean, that's further down the road. Where what we need to do is we determine who the hell we want, and we figure out what that's going to be, and then we go and negotiate it from there.
Well.
Who's going to negotiate?
We'll, we'll have to get in a room and we'll be back and forth kind of on a paper thing, actually, usually in these cases. But if we, if we would have a motion to, to set the, the cap, the, the salary band or range to include 110,000 with, if you want targets, to include performance targets. And I don't believe you need to really state right now what those targets are either, but it would be a discussion. But just to have those words in there to say that, that the 65 to 100,000 is now extended up.
This isn't, this isn't a private, this is not a private sector employment situation. And so we've given our search firm a target. We've discussed this target, we've set a budget on this target. I could go back and see, I mean, it'll take some time because we need to upgrade this system to find out exactly what we discussed on this issue. But this is apparent, this is what he's talked to every single candidate about. That's when we get those summaries. We always, we've been getting every single time how basically they feel about that target that we established. And we even lost a candidate who went somewhere else for the higher target. I, I don't, I don't think we're disadvantaging ourselves here on, in like a negotiation standpoint. Maybe if that's the concern. My concern is I don't want to go down a road that we're not all ready to go down. And we have essentially the advice of our partner that we've hired here, this is what it is. This is, this is what this candidate is telling me is important. And with that knowledge, I, I just want to make sure we're, we're all comfortable with the cards that are laid down.
But it, it sounds like we've got some discussion on the fact that the, there really is, it's based on either performance or qualifications of the candidate.
That's true.
So it sounds to me like they're really, it is negotiable up to, to include 110,000. That's how I'm interpreting what I'm hearing. So.
When I read what he put out there, I wanted to hear what the candidate had to say. I want to hear what, what everything else is behind it before I would even make a decision based off of that. I'm not going to go out and hire somebody with no previous experience and say just because they want to become a city administer, administrator for $110,000, it just won't happen.
Is that what we're talking about here?
Oh.
That's not what we're talking about.
I think it's.
Correct. Three decades of experience.
Well, I think as well, is we're just talking.
But when I read that, I want to talk to the, the individual. I'm saying, I don't care, let's figure it out, let's look what the heck we got. We need to look at the candidates.
Yeah.
We need to keep things moving here. I mean, we drag, drag and drag it out forever.
So it sounds like there is an agreement that we can tell Graham that the salary band is to include 110,000.
Yes.
Whether it's by negotiation.
I would like to go higher than that, Bruce. I don't think we need to put a limit on that upper amount at this point in time. First of all, Graham, according to his email, he's not going to be doing any more searching anyway. He's limited. We have one candidate there, and I think we really need to look at the, the overall cost, open up that salary, especially based on what we've got and whether we, when we put that on there, we also had some moving expenses. One of our candidates is looking at being in the local area or where there is going to be no moving expense. If we have no moving expense, then I'm open to adding a little of the salary there to make that up. I didn't, I don't want to see us put an actual dollar amount there and lose somebody over $2,000 or $3,000 a year.
I don't think we need to do anything written, so I, I appreciate, I think what you're trying to do, Bruce, which is given what happened the last two weeks, clear the air, make sure everybody's comfortable, moving forward. That's all we need to do. But I think everybody else can agree, the way that certain decisions have been made and the way that individuals have processed information, taking an extra step to make sure everybody understands what's going on is where we're at.
I think Graham did that, didn't he? Would he say?
Apparently he didn't with the tour.
Well, he didn't do that with the tour, that's for sure.
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm speaking to. So before we all get frustrated, I think that's all that's happening here, and I think we're okay. So thank you, Bruce. I think we're good.
Agreed? Throw it on it if you'd like. Make a motion.
I think we can just.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think I'm good.
I think we're on the same page.
I think, I think Graham has given a good example of, like, he said, he's given his stuff. We've seen how many candidates come and gone so far and where those dollar amounts lie. We kind of know where we need to be at now, so.
Yeah. All right, good discussion. We'll relay that information to Graham. Moving on to reports, mayor's report, generally, the, the budget items consumed a lot of time. We've also had meetings with different vendors to provide that information to the, to the budget numbers and at least preliminary. budget numbers, and at least preliminary numbers, for example, insurance and I.T., that sort of thing. I appreciate the, the staff putting in a lot of, putting up a lot of questions and phone calls, back and forth, interruptions especially, so, thank you, Amy, Todd, Jared, and Mike, and Teresa as well, as well as Maggie, involves a lot of people to pull those numbers up, as well as the library, we appreciate that. And had a meeting today with Dan Ramblesburg from the fire department, and again, you'll be seeing all those numbers and results of that. So, council reports, anything?
I've been getting a lot of questions why we haven't had an update on the fire station, why we didn't break ground this last fall like we said we were gonna do, and why everything was such a rush, 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 when we're now not breaking ground at all.
The contracts, bid documents stated March one, so that's still on track with that. We're getting in numbers from the architect as far as for budgeting purposes, amounts that spend each month, so that, that's activity.
So, we got that information to start with?
Well, the bid, the contract, the bid, I should say, came in from that, that bid stated to break ground March one.
Yeah, but I think there was the indication, right, back in the summer, that we made the adjustment, we stepped to the timeline, there, there was a chance that we were gonna get it anywhere.
Try to get in there.
And I don't, I don't, I'd have to go back and look at the dates, I don't know if there was delay in that, but, you know, I, I think it's fair, like, we haven't really had an update on where that is at, but again, if, yeah, I'll just leave that there.
As I remember, Bruce, the reason we did that March was Al, when he was contracting that out to put the bids out, there's several of the bidders said that they would lower the price if we did that September, rather than try to push them into the fall, and the council at that time said that the money was important, they wanted that cost down, and so Al did that, and he said he did that in order to get the bids down as slow as they were. Contractors, they would be able to pre, pre-set up their orders and stuff like that, and they, they bid the contract based on that March one start date.
I know, the start date does impact the bid price often, but I don't, I don't know how much, or I didn't have that kinda conversation with them. But it is on track to, for Garland to have the, the start date on March one.
Better concrete?
Pardon?
Better concrete or later than that?
Yeah, let's them continue working, all, you know, basically, once it starts, they can roll with it. It will involve one winter season, but by then, hopefully, it'll be at least looking at their timeline, they would be closer to having a roof, of course, if you do things inside, so.
So, as far as updates go, though, throughout the process, whether it's now or through the winter, or when we end up, when we do break ground in the spring, would, would we ask for those updates from, from the contractor or...
Well, Al will be providing the, Al's the go-between.
But Dan's, Dan's involved too, right?
Right, for change orders and stuff, yeah. But the architect is the go-between, between the city and the, and the contractor, for example, for our bid, our budget numbers, we ask the architect, the architect works the numbers, whether they get them from the contractor, how they do that.
So, that information would come from Al then, throughout the process?
Yeah.
Roger.
I think, I think we're due, probably, because we get close to that March one date, and we're not that far right now.
No, it's coming on, be exciting to see some pile up down there.
Can we get Al to come in and give us an idea of what the timeline's gonna look like?
Yep, we can ask for that, I think we asked for that in conjunction with the...
We're in forty-five days to March one.
In conjunction with the budget numbers that Teresa and I need, that's, yeah, I would think it's flow together, but we can ask that. All right, okay, any future agenda item discussion? Okay, public input for items that are not on the agenda for, in tonight's meeting? Anyone would like to, okay? State your name.
I'm in Opana, I live on Fair Hill Drive, and I have a concern about what time the window opens in the city hall. I play cards here at least two days a week, and usually the window is not open, we start at nine o'clock, but on Fridays, when there's no window open, a lot of the staff is here way before that, and I just think the window should be open, since it's only open from nine to three every, four days a week, I think we need to reconsider the people that live here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And again, for correspondence, we received Jerry Michaels stating that he would be retiring again, I think he's retired about three times, but be retiring again March fifteenth. Appreciate his help with our inspections and other code enforcement items that come into play, appreciate that.
Do we have someone to build this, like, where will the, where will they go? Is there something that we need to do as a council to build that?
Yeah, we'll have to, have to hire or contract with someone, that kind of thing, though. There's an association of code enforcement folks, we reaching out to find what, where those sources are. There's also the building, at times, we've, in the past, had worked with Fairfax, but there'll be something, we'll have to move on here to bring those numbers in.
I think I read that he's not taking any new ones, he's here through March just to finish what he already has, but he won't be taking any new ones, so if we get one, we need somewhere to sign it to the current plan and how to budget, knowing who's gonna do that.
That's right, that's one of the things, the feelers we have out there now, is cost and availability, so.
Probably should do that pretty quick, because I'm sure somebody's gonna get yelled at at the window or get called, and they can't get their stuff looked at.
Yeah, this is one of the slowest times, you might say, right now, so.
About March first, that'll change, but... Well, I'm just talking about getting stuff looked at.
Just houses start being built.
Nice weather, people start doing projects, and they can't get a look at it.
Are we finding a replacement?
Well, again, we've, in the past, we have contracted with Fairfax, for example, at one time, that there's options out there, we'll put out the word, and that association of code enforcement officials includes folks from those agencies, see what's available. In the past, we have used code enforcement officers, even when Jerry was busy or doing other things, from other departments, so we'll put out those, those letters and find out. And we have the next regular council meeting, January twenty-eighth, we are planning a special workshop for January twenty-first, and that January twenty-first date is six P.M. start time. And with that, that concludes our business for this evening, so we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please, sir.
I'll, I'll Trevor, yeah, and then roll call then, we'll have Trevor Durski.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
E.J. Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
And Jim Kane.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, everyone, have a good evening, stay warm.
Thank you.
Yes. Isn't that gonna delete?
Nope.
It'll just say that.